Good evening, I'd like to call this Thursday at 11:18. Study session of Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order. Please rise and join us for a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we'll jump right into item number three, our study session items. And 3.1 is the legislative strategy discussion.
Okay, I'm gonna, Charlie Brown and I are gonna tag team on this and Charlie's gonna do most of the work, but I think everyone here knows Charlie. He's been our governmental affairs person for almost seven years now.
Yes.
Yes, and does an outstanding job. He's has been around Olympia for a long time and knows how that process works. And the thing I like about Charlie is that he has the ability to work both sides of the aisle and very few governmental affairs people have that ability to do that because of where he's been in his career with private clients in addition to government and schools. So what we're gonna do is just go through where we are right now with what's going on in Olympia. And we got an election coming up in November and some other things. So Charlie's just gonna talk to you about what he's been picking up and I know he's been meeting with legislators and staff, so.
Thank you, thank you Karen and thanks for the vote of confidence. I passed out two documents for you today. The top document is kind of the overview of the major legislative topics that I see coming in the 2019 legislative session. The other document, which is a three-page document, was last year's final legislative agenda for the district. I thought it might be helpful just to have that as a reminder. And I'll make sure that the other board members get these or I have these conversations with the other board members as soon as possible, just in the sense that we were hoping to kick this off tonight and then as the current board members know, it's been my practice to have a one-on-one type of a meeting with each of you just to walk through all this stuff and make sure that we're capturing the issues that you think are important to Tacoma Public Schools. So let's just start right out of the gate. The operational funding under the new education funding model is really the issue. And certainly it's a key issue for Tacoma Public Schools, but it's a key issue for school districts statewide. And you'll see that the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction has put forward a pretty bold plan for addressing education operational funding in this upcoming legislative session. I have to give a lot of kudos to the Superintendent of Public Instruction for his willingness to not only make the requests for funding of various programs and areas that he did, but also to back it up with a funding source. You don't often see that from people in that particular position. And Superintendent Reichdahl, I think, his work as a state representative showed through in the sense that, hey, if I'm gonna be asking you for X hundreds of millions of dollars, I'm gonna turn around and show you how I think that we ought to pay for it or suggest that the legislature consider paying for it. So I think that the top issue is enrichment levies and I noted that they're now called enrichment levies under the new language that was adopted in House Bill 2242, or 22, yeah, 2242 back in 2017. And they're, we all know them as local levies and that's what they really are. The legislature, when they adopted these new levies, really wanted the local funding to be used for enrichment, for programs or staff that went beyond what the state pays in a prototypical model and that's why it's entitled enrichment. It's fairly well-recognized that the school districts are using enrichment funding for programs that the state has not yet funded and we need the state to pick up the basic education funding that is still carried by local funding. And I think a great example of that is special education. And the, that's an area that I think that we're gonna have to be pushing on. So in that statewide enrichment levy rate area, the key issue, I think, for certainly Tacoma School District and a number of school districts across the state is the fact that some districts get to collect $2,500 per student and other districts are limited to just $1,500 per student. That's a $1,000 per student differential, which is, and it becomes a funding equity issue and it's inequitable. And I think that anyone who you discuss this issue with that has an understanding of education recognizes that there needs to be equity at that local levy area because these are the programs that help all the school districts get to the graduation rates that I think that the legislature is demanding that school districts achieve. And you don't have a similarly situated student in every school district, right? So these local levy funds need to be equitable across the state and a school district shouldn't be held back to just $1,500 per student when the other districts around it or nearby are getting $2,500 per student. And in the case of Tacoma School District, it's pretty straightforward. 28,000, 29,000 students, I think, this year, times 1,000 is $29 million. We have a $29 million differential from what other districts would otherwise likely be able, would like, would be able to collect and we're held back. And that's true among a number of districts across the state and I think that those districts across the state are asking for the same thing and I think that Tacoma School District, by all right, should as well. How we get there is yet to be determined. The superintendent has put out a proposal that is really pretty bold and it actually talks about 22%, you know, allowing a school district to collect 22% of its state and federal funds. It's something that we need to work through in terms of how it works for Tacoma School District. The understanding I have in my conversations with the legislative folks down at the OSPI suggests that Tacoma's a big winner in that thing. I was told it was in the $26 million range, give or take, for the Tacoma School District, but that was just off the top of their head and I haven't seen the spreadsheets for that yet. If that works, you know, that's 26 million more than what we're authorized to collect today. And if that's what the legislature wants to get behind, I'm not gonna say it's not enough. I'm gonna say if that's a politically doable proposal and that's where we are, then let's move forward. But again, we'd have to have a little more conversation, it's a fairly new proposal. I know that Representative, or I'm sorry, Senator Guy Palumbo, who's a senator from up in the first legislative district in King County there, also has a proposal on local levies and how to do those. I haven't had a chance to get too deep into that proposal, but it also recognizes that there ought to be equity in funding. I think there's gonna be other proposals. I know that school districts from eastern Washington and other lower property tax, low property tax valued districts would like to see more levy equalization funding, the LEA funding. So the, those districts have a harder time raising their property taxes to generate the kind of money that would get them up to $2,500 than a property tax wealthy district would, so they're asking for additional LEA funding. If the legislature can find a way to put more money into LEA, and Tacoma's a recipient of LEA right now, has been historically, then we should be working with that. I guess my point is that I don't know that it's in the district's interest to land on any single proposal, but rather to say, we need to support a equitable funding system for local enrichment levies that is, that doesn't differ whether you're along the I-5 corridor, along the I-90 corridor, or any point in between.
So in other words, we're just gonna wait and see what comes out and then we're gonna...
We're gonna continue monitoring and we're, we had a proposal last year. It made it through the House of Representatives. Our local delegation was incredibly supportive of us last year. They knew what the problem was. We ran into a little bit of a hiccup there in the last day of the legislative session. Our superintendent got called down to Olympia. We had some discussions with members of the House and the Senate and we made it clear that that was a, that would only get us through the one year and here we are again and we're going back. So unless you have questions on that piece, Scott?
Thank you. I find it interesting that they, it's a local levy, but there's no local control.
Right.
So that's an issue that I would like us to have conversations about with the legislature.
Me too.
I want to understand why state legislators think that they can dictate how local taxpayers have entrusted us to make decisions on behalf of the district, how they just circumvent the role of the local school board.
And I did testify to that, if you remember last spring about local control, ability to set our own rates.
So I would be interested to hear what their justification is.
Yeah, the same thing.
Or usurping a locally elected school board.
Right.
And then on the 2,500 to 1,500, was it just a tax cut? Why wouldn't it be 2,500 or 1,500, whichever is more, instead of whichever is less?
Under the, under the 2242?
Yeah.
The decision that came out on the last day before the end of the budget cycle for the legislature, the decision, or the agreement, I guess, among the negotiators was that in exchange for a higher statewide property tax, they wanted to see reductions in the local property taxes and that would be your local levies. And some people saw it as an opportunity for tax reductions and I would argue that in the Tacoma area, some of the legislators agreed that the tax reductions here in exchange for a lot of statewide property tax money flowing out of the property wealthy districts, you know, was good. I don't think that everybody had a really good sense as to just how big some of these cuts would be, what a $1,500 really meant. I don't want to ascribe necessarily any particular motive. What I will say is that in doing what, in making this deal, the agreement was to increase statewide property taxes, which quite frankly drove a lot of money out of the high-rise buildings in our urban centers, Seattle, Bellevue, and other areas, and spread it out across the state. And they, the school, the districts where property taxes were in the $3 and $4 range per thousand to get to the local levies that they were doing, some of those legislators were saying that those are generally poorer areas and those residents are less able to afford such a high levy rates, so they went to the 150.
So I would be interested in better understanding when Tacoma voters authorize up to $76 million being collected, why the state legislature thinks that they have the authority to come in and change that.
I would like a straight answer on that question as well.
Well, let's ask the question, because I think the public demands an answer. I've had a lot of people come up and say, I don't understand why there's a budget deficit. I voted to authorize 76 million and then I get into the uncomfortable conversation of saying, yes, and here's what your state legislature did to that, that they have tied our hands. Not only do we have one arm behind our back, we've got both arms behind our back and no real, I've not seen any real interest in having that question publicly answered. And I think the people, certainly of the city of Tacoma, deserve an answer to that question, because it sure feels like a usurpation of our authority at the local level. We're the ones that bear the responsibility of having to make painful cuts and yet no reasonable explanation that I've heard around why they feel like they can make that determination of, to go against the intent of the majority of the people in Tacoma with respect to that operating levy.
If I can add on to that, when I went down there last spring, I made that very clear that I felt it was a responsibility, and this was the quote, that we, as local elected officials, should have the ability to determine what the needs of ours community are and to set the rate based upon what we know our voters will approve. And I, and the interesting thing to me is that McCleary did never, did not ever mention, nor did the Supreme Court ever mention, anything having to do with local levies. That was something that just came in at the end, as Charlie said, when they decided to go with that statewide upping of the property tax and then like, oh shoot, maybe we better mitigate that. And I think that's kind of, in my mind, when I went back over that, and you can disagree, was that, oh, well, we better figure out how to lower some of that. So that's where they came with the buck 50 and they, and unfortunately, that's based on assessed valuation and this city does not have and never has had large assessed valuation and our voters have said yes. So I think that's a point that I, when with Scott and last spring, made to them that, you know, why are we elected if we do not have control over our local dollars? And I think that's a, I think that could be a constitutional question too, in terms of what, we have the ability to set those levies and if we have the ability to do that under the law, then we should be allowed to do that. And I think that might be something that we should, I think it is something that we should push hard and I think that's something that WASTA might be interested in too, in terms of the responsibilities of school directors vis-à-vis local levies and bonds, about who should have that authority to set those, you know, and, I mean, why are we here to clean up, you know, now we have to deal with, and I've had those same conversations with everybody in my neighborhood, why are we having problems? Well, that's not, makes sense and it doesn't. So I think I, for where I'm at, I'm with you and I was there last spring, because I was just really unhappy that they would choose to start telling us how we can spend our local, how much of our local dollars we can raise, particularly when we've never failed an O&M levy.
What I can tell you...
You know, so anyway, that's our rant for right now.
And I appreciate that. And what I can tell you is that we have a lot of community partners who are very interested in working with us on this legislative agenda in this particular area. I've been contacted by some of them directly and asked to come and talk. I've been very happy and pleased that they invited me to do that. I've had some conversations with legislators. My goal is to not necessarily rehash what happened in the past, but yet, but actually say, let's go and fix the problem that stands before us. And I think legislators understand and the public understands that there is an issue yet before us. In fact, a conversation yesterday with a prominent legislative member suggested that while the court case might be behind us now, the issue of funding basic education is not finished yet, so we're gonna go from there. The second issue, I guess, on this bullet point would be the regionalization question and I think that we saw regionalization kind of rise a little bit in this last few months where some districts are given a regionalization factor of, you know, 18%, some 24 actually and then others 12% like Tacoma, a neighboring school district at six and one that's less than 10 miles away at zero. And the discussion was raised last year about the fact that we have a labor pool. We don't necessarily have labor that sits within the geographic boundaries of a school district and that the labor pool, the geographic area of the pool, is what we should be looking at in terms of regionalization. So I think legislators are coming to understand that a little bit better and that we should be making sure that the compensation opportunities that regionalization provided didn't stop at the boundary of a school district. So we need to work on getting that to be levelized as well. I don't know how critically important that's going to be for this particular legislative session, but I think it's important that we bring it up. And if the legislature's gonna set a two-year budget, that maybe some of that be, somehow a mechanism be put into place so that districts like Tacoma are not sitting at a regionalization funding disadvantage to school districts adjacent to it. The special education, I think I alluded to a little bit. The overall cost of a full-on special education funding fix from the state is in the 300 to 400 million dollar range. They did increase our special education funding levels last year for school districts and my recollection is around 100 million. Andre, do you remember that off the top of your head? It, you know, it was important. They did increase the funding factor there. There has been a OSPI-led special education task force on which one of, there's been school district representation and they are coming forward with a recommendation. I know that the Superintendent of Public Construction has put forward some funding suggestions there. What I can tell you is that legislators on a bipartisan, in a bipartisan manner, have said that special education funding by the state is a top priority. They recognize that it is the, it is part of basic education, it is the state's responsibility and they intend to address it. Whether they can address a 300 to 400 million dollar additional funding stream is yet to be seen, but they do know, they know what the numbers are and they know that they've gotta address it. So anything that gets put into special education does help us with our local enrichment funding issues, because let's be honest about it, we're paying for basic education still out of enrichment, which is what 2242 was designed to eliminate and it's gotta get fixed. So any questions there? I mean, there are various ways, I can go into some of the detail about how it works, but it is mind-numbingly boring, but it's important, except for the CFO.
Best numbers nerds like that.
The prototypical school model modifications, I think, are also critical. As you all know, that prototypical school model is the, is basically, is the basic structure for funding basic education by the legislature. And the prototypical model is a numbers-based document and it allows us to, for nurses, for instance, you get 1.2 nurses or something like that in the prototypical school model per, you know, however many of students. And, you know, how many of you have 1.2 nurses at, you know, any particular location, right? So, and I think, school districts across the state do hire more nurses than what the prototypical model allocates funding for, so that would come out of the enrichment. That's true for counselors, custodians, social workers, certainly in security personnel. And there's desire to increase those funding levels and I think that for the school district, working on putting more, getting some of those prototypical school funding levels higher actually is better for the students overall, because, you know, you need that backup support at the school building for all those students, certainly and especially in all these areas, the more we can have in the school buildings. And if they're going to limit the enrichment levy rates, then certainly they should need to turn around and pick up some of the other costs that we all know is the cost of real education, actual education versus the state model, prototypical basic education funding model. Any questions on that?
I just have a comment. I just wanted to see if I could add, parent, well, it's called parent involvement coordinator is currently in the prototypical model.
Okay.
To this list.
All right.
We pay for a number of family liaisons in our schools and right now, the prototypical school model only allocates like a fraction of an FTE at the elementary school level. So it'd be great to see that on the list too.
Thank you very much.
I had a question back to special education for the superintendent. What sort of impacts can our families anticipate if the legislature doesn't fully fund special education?
Well, it can, the bottom line is it continues to take away from basic ed. So we can do less to, you know, fund all the, you know, the things that we do for, you know, every student in Tacoma Public Schools, because, you know, we have to utilize that money to pay for our specialized students.
And if there were to be an increase in special education funding, how would you envision the district using it?
So, you know, it pays for, it pays for the paras that, you know, that support our one-on-one students. I mean, it's a myriad, it's a special education teachers, it's the nurses that we need to have that one-on-one support, you know, in schools that, you know, that have a high percentage of students with disabilities that need to have medical support. And so you're not always having to pull a resource away from a school as soon as it drops, you know, from the number of students, because you can, you know, you can have the money to support schools equally across the district. That is huge.
Thank you.
So the next bullet point would be relaxation of spending restrictions in the categorical funding. And I guess my bullets kind of got messed up there. I apologize. So I, the parts of the complexity of basic education funding are that the legislature in, over the years, has wanted to see more funding provided in certain areas where studies have shown there are big gains for students and I'd argue that K-3 class size certainly came out of that type of a discussion that occurred over the years down in Olympia and quite frankly nationwide. The challenge with K-3 class sizing, as I think we all know, is that number one, it requires more space for the kids and you may not have more space and then we've got a whole capital construction issue there, a school building issue. But you also have the question of, you know, saying to a district, you need to hire these more teachers and does that actually cost the district more to be able to hire those teachers based on some of the other factors that are related to that type of a deal? Whether it's more custodians, whether it's more assistants in the background that are not necessarily funded by the state? And to simply say, we want more K-3 class size or more teachers... And to simply say, we want more K-3 class size or more teachers or people in K-3 doesn't necessar, it, the funding never has really followed the K-3 class size requirements. So there are ongoing discussions about more flexibility. I would argue that for the school board's interests, it would be flexibility in the funding and how we use that funding. If we don't have the class space for K-3, we should not be penalized and that funding held back from the school district. And until we do get that class size or that class space, we should be able to utilize that funding for our other basic ed costs. And I think also that the conversation needs to be around the fact that a K-3 class size, if we don't have classroom that could hit the 1 to 17 ratio, can we put two teachers in a room with 26 kids, let's say, and have that qualify? And I think that those conversations are ongoing and K-3 was delayed again last year, but I think that there's a desire by policymakers to see K-3 class size go into place so that an active conversation around K-3 class size, I think, is important for the district.
Can I comment on, I agree with that. You know, for a long time, I think the legislature hasn't taken into account what we economists call economies of scale. Larger school districts don't have the capacity to deliver in many cases, like on the LAP stuff, because we have so many schools. And we didn't have enough, what they asked us to do, we couldn't do. And so if we had the flexibility to move those monies around and use them for intervention or things like that. So I understand the, you know, where legislature and I know that Superintendent Reichels, where I disagree with him on that, you know, wants to put up fences. When you put up fences, you close people in and you mess up creativity, I think. I could have used a better word, I guess, but, and I think that we need to have a trust factor among us. And I think that this school district has proved that it can be trusted with flexibility for funding. And I think what happens when you put up those fences and, you know, we've seen it in all, all across, is that kids ultimately suffer and aren't getting the services that they need and we aren't, we aren't spending that money. So I would, I think the larger school districts across the state would probably be in the same position that we are, looking at that question of flexibility and hoping that, in your, you know, suggestion like that, but allow, trust us to spend that money and spend it appropriately and be responsible for spending it and say you do have the flexibility, you know, let us know what you're doing.
Some of the conversations have been, if we can't, if we can't meet the requirements, show us why you can't meet the requirements and then tell us what you did with the money, which it, you know, which is.
Is flexibility.
That is flexibility.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If we can't do it, then show us, we'll show you what we can do and we'll report back and show you what we're, what we're using it for rather than just having it sit there and not being able to spend that dollars to, you know, keep our graduation rates up and our third grade reading scores and stuff like that.
I think Mr. Heinz had a.
I had a question. What evidence or data is the legislature using to support K-3 class size?
Well, quite frankly, an initiative that was passed by the vote of the people is, makes it the law of the land. It's my understanding that there was evidence and data behind that, but I was not one of the promoters necessarily of that proposal, so I couldn't speak to that. What I'm, what I am saying is that it is the law in the books and there has been some.
I think some time ago, the Washington State Institute for Public Policy did cost benefit analysis, drawing in their, using their meta-analysis approach, which pulled in a few studies from some time ago that pointed to gains in academic achievement using probably some of the assessments in a few study instances. It was probably the Texas Star study from the, like, late 70s or some early 80s and a couple others. But I think the Institute for Public Policy's research was the basis for the recommendation a few task forces ago.
So I do, and I, and that's exactly where I was going. I think that there's flawed data that's been used.
Way flawed.
And there's all sorts of things that the people have spoken on in the past that then went unfunded. So I wonder if there is an opportunity with the legislature, because again, this feels like, I'm feeling intrude upon as a local school board member to make investments to the benefit of my students. What I think is a more appropriate role for the legislature is to determine outcomes. And I think this is an opportunity to begin having conversations around, I think it's perfectly appropriate for the legislature to set outcomes. When we have conversations about education with people in the legislature that don't really have any relevant experience, I appreciate in Pierce County for the Tacoma School District, representatives Kilduff and Murray are both former school board members. One is a D and one is an R. It's not a partisan issue. They understand substantively, they understand the issue. And I'm often skeptical when somebody comes and tells me, if you just do this one thing, because education is complex and nuanced and it's interdependent. So I would encourage us to look for opportunities to push back on what are the outcomes that you think are going to be achieved with K-3 class size? And if we are able to get to those outcomes using a different model, what's more important? To be able to have the reduction in class size or to be able to achieve those outcomes? And that, to me, begins to build the opportunity to work collaboratively on defining flexibility, be outcome focused. That's something that we can measure. K-3 class size, it reminds me of a couple of sessions ago when there was a lot of debate about, we're going to automatically retain third graders that aren't at third grade reading level at some single point in time. And again, that was based on outdated data and folks got really, this is for the good of the kid. Well, really? Holding a kid back? How's he doing in math? What's the social stigma? How's he doing a month later? Does he all of a sudden read at third grade level, but we don't take that into consideration because of the inflexible measure? So putting outcomes in place and hold us accountable may provide a vehicle for flexibility with how we make investments of those funds.
Okay. Thank you. The basic question, what are the outcomes you desire in K-3? Cost size reduction and give us the flexibility to achieve those outcomes.
Yeah, what do you think is going to happen?
Tell us what you want and we'll get.
What specifically do you think is going to happen when we have 17 to 1? Let's identify what those outcomes are and then if we can demonstrate that we can get to those outcomes using a different model, that would seem to meet the intent of the investment of those dollars is to the outcomes, not solely to just have less kids in a classroom. I mean, I would, I would assume the argument because the data I've reviewed is flawed.
It's way flawed.
It's outdated and I don't think it's currently relevant. So to have legislators say what they think happens, not just the people want 17 to 1, what do you think as a legislature is going, legislator is going to occur in that classroom? Greater achievement? Great. As measured by what? And that, to me, is the ultimate accountability of a local school board and a local school district. We tell you that we're going to achieve at a certain level and we tell you the plan to achieve at that certain level and give us consequences if we don't achieve at that certain level, but don't give us money and then restrict how we can use it, particularly when you have no subject matter expertise in the issue.
I think the critical point of that is, and don't tell us how to do it.
Yes.
And that's, that's it. You know, we will, we can figure that out. That's what we are elected to do and that's what we have a superintendent and a staff and a teaching corps and, you know, they're the ones. Because, you know, one size does not fit all in this state and that's been the problem is trying to fit all 295 school districts in the ones, you know, in the square box and it doesn't work. And I think that's something when we talk about flexibility is recognizing the differences in sizes finally in school districts.
Right.
To get them to say, okay, Tacoma's going to do this, but, but we're getting too much, in my opinion, too much micromanaging now on the part of, and you and I had a conversation about that with Rodney Tom, a number, he was still, yeah, you remember that. And what you're going to wind up with is the legislature trying to micromanage all of the school districts. And I don't think they want to do that. And, and I'm with, you know, on the, on all of these studies, you can find, you can pull something that'll justify just about anything you want to do. And the K-3 class size was about, and that's been at least 10, 10, 12 years ago, when that came around, that, oh, well, we'll just go to smaller class sizes and kids will automatically achieve. Well, we know that that not necessarily works because we've seen schools, districts that have small class size and they're not doing as well as we are. So a lot of it has to do much more with our instructional models and our interventions and, and the kind of things that we do. But I think we need to, as school districts, make it real clear, don't tell us how to do our jobs. Just hold us accountable if we don't.
And Charlie, I think about it as the dialogue between the district and the legislature is to get consensus on the what and the why. What are we doing and why are we doing it? Which leads to the outcomes and then flexible on the how. Because that's where the innovation occurs. If you want to improve educational outcomes, you can't continue to deliver education the same way. You have to change the way you deliver it. And it's going to look different in Tacoma than it does in eastern Washington. There are going to be things that work in one district that don't work for a variety of reasons in another district. But if we're focused on the outcomes, then I would assume that the legislature would be supportive of initiatives that lead to better educational outcomes for all kids in Washington State.
Just want to do a quick time check. Ms. Medina, how much time do you need?
I certainly wouldn't need more than 30 minutes.
Okay.
Okay, and I need about five minutes to talk about this.
And we can speed this up, too. So on the transportation funds, I think it's pretty straightforward. We get more transportation funding allocation than, than I think is the actual cost. And if they're going to count that toward Tacoma School District's overall education funding level, then Tacoma ought to be able to collect those funds and use them for the purposes, other purposes if they want to. And if the legislature chooses to modify their formula, then have at it. But for the time being, don't hold us back and then hold back money, yet tell us that that's part of your overall funding level. The institutional education cost, this is something that we continue to ask legislators to stress and hopefully finally they'll do it. I think we all know that Tacoma funds the costs of Reiman Hall for education there. And the legislature has not historically funded that and that's basic education. Any comments?
No, I think that's long overdue.
Did you already say, Charlie, about the proposals, anything about the proposals that are out there on institutional education funding?
Not yet.
No, I haven't.
The superintendent has one, state superintendent has a funding proposal.
Did they come out in the fact the other day?
It is in his decision packages. It moves to a more of a prototypical school funding model and provides some enhancements beyond the base model to help meet students' needs for differentiated instruction and for specially-designed instruction in those settings. And then I think there's also a proposal out there for staffing. It's not in the education programs for, but for additional staffing from DCYF.
Well, kudos to the superintendent then because that's, that's terrific. That's the first time I've seen something come out like that. And I will look into that. Thank you very much for the heads up. And then SEB funding is the other area and I think that's just kind of this elephant in the room among policymakers and the, the state, people trying to figure out how to implement it. The employee benefit board that's being created under, has been created under 2242. The costs are probably more than what the legislature expected they would be. The costs for the school districts are tremendous. I understand that for Tacoma School District, it's in the 3 million, give or take range, possibly, depending on how it's defined.
That was our low estimate.
Low estimate?
Yeah, I think we're probably looking at upwards of five.
Okay. So that's another, another five that would come out of the quote-unquote enrichment when, so, so there's, there are discussions going on about SEB that we're going to be a part of. So I just, you know, it's one of those programs where it ought to be fully funded by the state.
Yes, absolutely.
School construction funding, I think we all know that the school construction formulas are outdated. The superintendent did, Superintendent of Public Construction did come out with some new proposals on school construction formula, increasing square foot per student allocations and the area cost allowance allocations. Let's just be honest about it, when you've got a district like ours that is, you know, in a renewal mode of all of our schools and need to, down the road, continue to build as, as a vibrant city that we are to, to serve all of our students, the, the construction program has to keep up with it. And we've been fortunate to be able to collect some money from the current school construction assistance program, but it is woefully underfunded and it should be increased. And then there's also the question about the simple majority for bonds. And we're one of only 16 states that require a 60% requirement to pass a school bond. When you've got, education is your paramount duty, the, the simple majority should allow for the passage of those bonds to build the schools that would provide the school space for all of our students to achieve the graduation rates that we're asking for. And if they keep K-3 class size requirements in law, then certainly there's an even stronger argument for a simple majority for school bonds. And so it's a position that the district has supported in the past and we, who knows? You know, it, it's one of those that somebody laughed and said, well, we've been working on that for 16 years and, you know, I just refuse to give up. And I think that it's the right thing to do. And my experience has been that Tacoma Public Schools has decided that we're going to do the right thing, not the expedient thing. So let's move forward with that.
And I would argue again, that's a local control issue.
Yep.
295 school districts should have the right to determine what sort of investment they want to make, how much we want to.
Charlie, that's gone on for 40 years, that whole deal.
I'd like to say I'm not quite that old.
I am, I can remember. It was a part of our education package back in 1975 was to go to simple majorities. So maybe one of these days, people will not have long memories and say, okay, let's just do this.
I know that that is a position that's supported by the superintendent of public construction as well, just in terms of it's the right thing to do. Just in general, for a general election and Olympia updates, I just think it's good to remind people that general elections are coming up here in November. And ballots, we're an all-mail-in ballot state and so the ballots, I understand, are being put into the mail tomorrow. So you're going to see quite a bit of activity over the next several weeks in terms of election issues. The, I might remind you that about 17 open seats are out there in the state legislature. We had a really large number of legislators decide to retire last year. I'm very sad to see a lot of those people go because I had really good, strong friendships with a lot of them. They'd been there for a long time, but, you know, there's a time to, a number of them and, and, you know, Ruth Cagney is one that comes to my mind. Had really worked hard on early education-type stuff and she felt like she had gotten to the place where she could in, in creating the Department of Early Learning, a number of other proposals and really moving forward on that. And I said, Ruth, you can't do this. And she said, Charlie, I've done what I think I can do and now it's time to let somebody new, you know, with some new blood coming. And so we've got 17 open seats. We've got a number of seats that are, where incumbents may not be returned to Olympia and so we're going to have a number of new faces down there. I can say that within our Tacoma area delegation, we'll have at least one new face, but the, I think that we're going to be in good shape in terms of the receptivity of our local delegation to education-related issues. As we have had in the past, continue to move forward. So we should be in good shape there. So I'd just leave it at that.
I think we have a couple, I have a couple of comments, but I think Director Heinz has a couple of quick questions.
Three quick questions. You've talked to OSPI, but I haven't heard anything about OFM or the governor's office. Are they, do they have any legislation or solutions that they're proposing?
Yeah, the governor's office usually comes out with their budgets and their big legislative proposals in December timeframe. I have to believe that.
Packages together.
Yeah.
Any rumblings about what, where they might be going?
I have a meeting. I have a meeting with somebody at OFM on Monday.
Okay.
So, I might be able to get some intelligence for you.
Okay, revenue forecast?
The most recent revenue forecast suggested that the state is in the positive to about eight-hundred million dollars coming up in this, from what they expected at the adoption of their budget last year. So, the economy tends, continues to be strong. I think most of that still is driven by construction-related activity. Hopefully, the construction activity continues apace, and quite frankly, I hope a lot of it comes down to the city of Tacoma.
Wouldn't that be nice?
And then, I have had a lot of constituents ask me the specific salary amount that was in the bill. So, if you could provide us with the salary amount and the page number in the bill on which that was found, that would be very helpful.
I'll follow up with you on that specifically.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Is that, Director Viall, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I do.
Before we get to the next item?
Just on this, I think, you know, right now, everything's in flux, and I know that OFM's still putting their budgets together and going through the decision package stuff, and we'll find out better what the gov has, and when they, legally, they have to have the budget out by December twentieth, so that will be done. But I think right now, for us, and Charlie and I have talked about this, is just kind of be there and just follow what's going on until we actually know who's going to be in what positions in the legislature and what. I'm sure there's going to be a number of proposals for many of these things on here, and then we can, as a board, get together like we do in December and come up with a legislative package and have a pretty fair idea of it. Right now, just do our intel work and kind of figure out what's, and then we can come down to a decision as to what we want to support and what's best for us and for our kids. So, that's where I think we should be, and, you know, and I think, you know, it's served us well in the past.
And I do feel like we're very well positioned.
I do too.
Having you down there, so thank you. You have, you're a trusted source, knowledgeable, you're able to grind it out, because sausage making is neither fun nor pretty, so thank you for your input. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and Director Heinz also just shared that in that process, it'd be helpful to have kind of a scorecard of what we proposed last year and where we landed, just as we get started with our next round. A couple comments I have, oh, I'm just thinking about the general election and outcomes. It'd be helpful to get a sense of how many school board members get elected. I know there are several who are running right now, just to, I mean, that's probably already on your mind, but for us, it'd be helpful to know who those folks are in the end. And then I just wanted to offer another piece of information about what was in the state superintendent's budget request in relationship to some of the things that are on your list. One other thing is the prototypical school model modifications. He has one proposal that would put additional middle-school counselors into schools.
Oh, wow.
And it would also, through a grant program for schools that are identified for comprehensive support, it would be a 1.0 nurse and a 1.0 family engagement counselor, or family engagement coordinator for comprehensive schools that serve seventh and eighth graders. So, it's a little bit of addition. And then my other comment, I just don't want to forget it. I know we'll talk later about items for our agenda and things to consider. I think it's a small thing, and I don't even know if it's worth including on the agenda, but in the realm of compensation, to your question about the dollars, there was a study requirement that every six years, the legislature would look at those values, and I think between the original twenty-two forty-two and what got changed, they shortened that to every four years, but they didn't move the start date. So, if it's going to happen every four years, then maybe the start date should be four years from when it was done. So, I don't know if we think that would be a significant thing or not, but I think it's something to maybe think about.
It could be. Some of those arguments again, and you're still looking four years out for compensation study, I think.
Yeah, especially given all the changes in this last-
Given, and also with the SEB stuff in terms of more benefits and things like that, that's probably a good point. Maybe we ought to take a look and ask them why they didn't do that. Maybe it was just an oversight, too, or they didn't want to get into it, one or two. That's one of those, we did that, but we're not going to worry about it.
I did have one last thing, I'm sorry, and I know we have to move on. Just a question for Charlie. Do you hear, on the levy front, last year, towards maybe the middle or the end of the session, there was a little bill introduced that would have allowed, given school districts, local school districts, the authority to levy funds for early learning. Do you have any sense that that might come back, or have you heard anything about that?
I do have a sense that that might come back. I think that there is enough general support for early learning in communities, and if I recall, that was a proposal that would have allowed for a local levy for early learning. And there was enthusiasm behind that proposal. It was introduced late, but it was done because, not necessarily that they thought they could get it through, but to start that conversation. And I heard recently about some desire to see that, and I think that if you look at what other communities, certainly what Tacoma's doing with early learning, but other communities where the public is getting behind some of the local funding for education, I will look into it, and I, frankly, I apologize to you that I didn't put it on this list. I think it's something that we might want to, if that's something you'd like to do, then let's do it.
I mean, I just went, no apologies, but I just remembered it coming out late, but thanks, Charlie.
Well, thank you for reminding me.
And if we don't get the authority to do that, we should get some of that early learning dollars, because as a school district, we are providing preschool, and I thought, you know, rather than it going to private providers, I think that's something that we might, if I can tag on to what you were wondering about, us being able to receive state funding for our preschools, you know, like our peer-model preschool and so on.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, bud.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Take care. Thanks. Thank you, Charlie. Want me to just briefly? Would you? Yeah, okay. Last spring, we had a retreat, I think it was spring or late winter, about looking at, and one of the topics that came up was looking at board policies and looking at how we can operate more efficiently, and I said I would do this, and finally, we got here, and I want to thank Renee and Josh for helping and aligning up and changing some of our policies. If you look at some of the dates on some of these changes, one of them goes back to nineteen seventy. So, it was probably time, and the changes are marked in here, and one of the things was, we changed that in the absence of the board president and vice president, the immediate past board president will assume the president's duties. And then, big changes are here, some of them were, I noticed Renee fixed the closed sessions, because that was something that was a new deal that the legislature came in. And one thing that we did add, that Director Heinz mentioned that the city does, and they have always done it, is meet as, have special meetings where we can meet as a committee of the whole. And we can have a meeting before, an open meeting before the, say, a board meeting or a study session where we meet as committee as a whole to discuss certain issues, and that is in policy fourteen hundred. And special meeting would be called, a meeting of the committee of the whole, and be called in the same manner as a special meeting. So, for example, we would just notice that, I assume, Renee, that as we do otherwise, if we want to have a meeting in a committee of the whole.
That's correct, just like you would a special meeting.
Right, a special meeting. Okay, and then, on the, on public notice, we just, you know, put the closed session in there, that got fixed. The main things, if you go over to eighteen twenty, is where the real work went into figuring out how we can better operate as a board. And one of the things was for us to have board annual goals. We talked about that, and there's language in here for board adopting, you know, this purpose of advancing the board adopted strategic plan goals, to make sure that, you see the language here, that there is a legal requirement that requires action. Is there a legal requirement that we need to ask when we put things together? Our goals for fiduciary responsibility, policy development and implementation, legislative advocacy, excuse me, sorry, community outreach, innovation, and that the goals would be prioritized by the board based upon the following criteria. Is there a legal requirement, alignment to the strategic plan goals, alignment to the benchmarks, assisting, furthering community initiatives, fostering innovation for achievement? We have, we did add a section here about community involvement, that we will look for community feedback throughout the year, both formal and informal, and one formal process is public comment. So, in other words, some of this is things that we've been doing, but it now actually is memorialized in policy and changed. And then a twelve-month cycle, and Dr. Garcia and I worked on this quite a while to come up with what we need to do each month of the year as a board in terms of policy. For, you know, in June, we have to complete the superintendent's evaluation and then schedule regular board meetings. July, there's a bunch of things here about our potential goals, you know, and begin to get community feedback on board goals through our normal constituent outreach, board reviews, annual goal monitoring report, and so on. You can read through these. August, you know, main thing we do is our WASD self-evaluation. We adopt the district budget and continue through all of these. I know, I had it sent out in the Friday report, and I think, Director Cobb and Director Heinz, you saw these before, too. I know you did, and I appreciated your feedback on that. Thank you. So, these are just ways to formalize what we do and to keep us on track as a board and to get through our business. And then the other thing is evaluation of the board, which is still in fourteen, is in eighteen twenty R, where we, it talks about our annual, they do get two pages in here, no, evaluation of the board. Again, that's, I guess I got double pages on here, that's okay. All right, so that's where we are at the end. So, that gets us through our evaluation, and then, when the evaluation is finished, both the president and vice president will get together and then review our evaluation, and then if there's any work that needs to be done, we will discuss it with the board.
And so, Vice President Viall, we will have on the agenda for next regular board meeting on Thursday, a first reading of these policies. And since it's a board matter, our policy doesn't require a first reading for a regulation, but in light of the importance, I'll put that on as well.
Great. Any questions? I'm going to-
Just one question about February, given our discussion at the last board meeting around the continuous achievement plans, is that the still-
Hang on a second, I've got to find it here.
Sorry. It's just a timing thing for the continuous achievement plans. Is that the right timing still?
Oh, for the school improvement plans?
Uh-huh.
It's probably not, Krista. I mean, if we, I don't know if you guys have changed timelines, but, so, we're doing that quarterly, quarterly, looking at the board-approved plans, so it might be-
We can fix that.
September and first, December first.
You can get those next.
Okay. Why don't we do that, and then just incorporate that new quarterly look at plans? That's good.
Whatever the board needs to take action, whatever that timeline makes sense.
You can look through these again, and if some of them need to be changed. I mean, there's nothing great of substance there that's going to create a big mess if we mess, you know, or, oh my gosh, we forgot to do this. These are guidelines for us to get these tasks done during this period of time. And then, you know, the board evaluation or twelve-month cycle and all the things that we need to do, so, anyway, sorry it took so long to get it done.
Thanks for your work on it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Thank you, that was great. That was a good update. So, and then, what goes along with that is we want to look at the budget. You guys have had lots to look at the budget, but I think that this is an important process, what we're going through to look at, you know, if we keep it in front of us and know what's going on, so, thanks, Rosalyn.
Thank you.
And I know you've had lots of collegial assistance.
Yes, this does not represent my work entirely. This is a collective effort, and so what I would really like to do is provide you with an update on the landscape that we're in financially right now. If you recall, on August twenty-third, we adopted a budget, and that budget had a four-hundred-and-sixty-six million dollar expenditure package associated with it. And at that point in time, we had budgeted around three-point-one percent for salary increases, and subsequently, we experienced a pretty significant work stoppage. And as a result of that, we offered salary increases that were beyond what we had initially planned for, and that pushed our expenditures outside of what our expenditures were planned for. And so, what we're experiencing at this point in time for eighteen nineteen is a shortfall of around twenty-three and a half million dollars. And then for nineteen twenty, we're experiencing a potential shortfall of fifty-four million dollars. That's a collective number. So, if we solve some of the problems in the twenty eighteen, nineteen year, that number for nineteen twenty will decrease with that. So, we have been working on what our plan is to address this shortfall and how we're going to go about doing that. And I want to point out that these numbers are not written in stone. As we go through the process and as we identify potential reductions, these numbers will flex conversely. As we go through the process of any year, any financial year, we may have unexpected costs that arise, or things that we weren't planning for, risks that come to fruition. And so, these numbers are based on what we know as of right now. Actually, that's not even true. These are numbers are based on what we knew on October third, and so we're still working off of these assumptions. This is the information that we shared with our central administration group, and we haven't shared it publicly with anyone outside of the central administration group, and so we wanted to bring that forward as, you know, our starting point. What we'll see in our district revenue projections, and this is very much in line with what Charlie was indicating, our revenues will decline from eighteen nineteen to nineteen twenty by close to thirty million dollars. And that is directly related to the levy. And what we were seeing is, our levy reductions were split into two years. We took half of it in eighteen nineteen and half of it in nineteen twenty. Fortunately, in eighteen nineteen, we were able to offset those revenue losses from the levy with additional revenue from the state. They provided us with some resources, they provided us with a one-time allocation, and that offset the loss for this year. But we were, we will be experiencing it next year unless there's legislative action to change that. So, what we've decided to do is work on a phased approach to reductions. We'll have two reduction rounds. Round one is to address our eighteen nineteen shortfall. Round two will be to address our nineteen twenty shortfall. We are focusing right now only on round one, and we have developed four phases within round one. Right now, we're working on, actually getting close to completion of phase one. Phase one has been focused solely on central exempt administration and central services relating to exempt work. Round two will work on central administration or central services broader than just the exempt group. And then phases three and four, we've defined as ancillary services and programs that are supporting schools, and then that's phase three. Phase four is our school-based. Our intention, these are purple, because we don't really intend in round one to get to those phases. Our hope is that we are able to meet our deficit and address our deficit just by looking at phase one and phase two outcomes. And then when we need to work on the nineteen twenty shortfall, we'll begin the same cycle over again, and we'll see how far that gets us. So, to talk you through where our phase one results are as of right now, and this is hot off the press, this is really as of today. We have, and I do want to note, our agreement was signed with the teachers on September thirteenth, and I think our parent educators were a week after that. So, we've had just five weeks of working on these reductions to come up with a pretty significant impact. Our parameters around reductions for phase one, we didn't want to impact classrooms. We looked at administration and exempt staff. Our intention was for where we were eliminating staff positions, we wanted to find placements for those staff, or find a place, a landing place for them, so that they weren't negatively impacted. We made all parts of the organization participate. Everyone on cabinet has been involved in these reductions. And we expect that people will find efficiencies within the current work. We're not expecting that we're going to be reducing work. There will be some things that will no longer be able to be done, just for the simple fact of less resources to provide the work, but none of these are really impacting our strategic plan goals. We were looking at, they impact in very moderate ways or in indirect ways. So, as of today, savings that we've realized, and what that means to me is, we've actually found the money in the system and taken it out and put it into an account to hold on to it, so that we can redistribute that to those places that require additional resources based on salary increases, or where we're seeing deficit. based on salary increases or where we're seeing deficits. We've eliminated $1.5 million of exempt positions, and we have eliminated $10.5 million of other spending reductions. And those run a range of, there's enrollment increase, so we had our increase in revenue. We had enrollment contingencies planned for in the budget. We're repurposing dollars that were made available as part of our agreement with the union when we finalized our agreement, so that we didn't have to use those dollars in different ways. We were able to use those to offset our budget deficits. We will defer preventative maintenance, election costs, and vehicle replacements as examples of what those reductions look like. Then we also have savings that are planned for. And in our minds, savings that are planned for are things that are in process right now. We just haven't actually notified those individuals or formally pulled the trigger on pulling those dollars back. And that represents almost another $6 million, another half a million dollars of potential savings in, in positions, and $5.5 million of other spending reductions. So to date, we've identified what we're planning to pull back or have already pulled back close to $18 million of the $23.5 million in just five weeks. We have really been intentional and thoughtful about those reductions. I would like to offer Lisa Nolan to talk through the position elimination component, and then I'll share with you some of our tracking mechanisms before we move on to next steps.
Can I? How many more slides do you have?
Like three?
Do we want to wait till the end? Do you have any questions at this point?
Maybe, maybe.
Okay, we'll go to the end.
Okay, so this is a visual that just provides us with the names of the positions that have been eliminated, and the employees who hold these positions have been notified of the position elimination. An important note is that some of these position eliminations take place right away. In some, most of them will be, will see the financial impact this year, but there's a couple that will have an impact for next year. In the area where it talks about working with data for solutions with each and every position elimination review, as Rosalyn mentioned, we asked ourselves, is there a must-have position within the organization that an individual could transfer to? Will it be necessary to have a standard elimination? And where you see the eight transfers, it means that somebody had the certificate necessary to be transferred from an exempt admin position, for example, to a teaching position. And we have executed that already. Our goal has been to treat people with dignity and respect, and I think that that data really exemplifies that where we can have someone else serve a function that's absolutely essential, then we can make that change and help someone transition into a new and different position. Rosalyn discussed some of our next steps within phase one. We have seven additional positions that are currently under review, and you may notice some titles of positions within this phase one, where we looked at attrition, if there was a natural opportunity where someone resigned from a, a position. We've asked ourselves, is this a critical position that must be ongoing, or is there an opportunity within our current workforce that people could take on certain tasks that wouldn't be burdensome to their, in addition to their current job description? So we actually have some, four professional technicals and one office professional, even though those were not identified originally as phase one.
Thank you. Our intent is to do some progress monitoring around the positions that we are impacting as well as having abilities to report where these reductions are coming from. We have heard over and over from our constituency that central administration is heavy and that we want to make reductions, and what does that look like? And I've also heard from exempt, from the exempt perspective as well. And so we've defined two tracking components. One is a central administration tracking component, and we're following the OSPI F-195 benchmarking rule around activity. And so these would be the activities that would be included in that cluster of individuals. And it's representative in how we currently benchmark ourselves against other school districts. And then a second component would be how we're classifying what exempt FTEs are. And so the superintendent, deputy superintendent, certificated and classified administrators would be our exempt. So they're basically the non-represented group of the district. And we've developed, and they're, these are in the beginning phases, because we don't have everything into the system yet. We've done these notifications just this week, so we haven't been able to actually process them through our loss and in-force system. But what we're finding in our central administration FTE is we've removed some of the vacancies already, and we had some position reclassifications that were done from a coding perspective. And that means that as of September 18th, we had 195 central office staff or central admin staff, which I would like to just point out, central admin is just looking at those activities. That, that could incorporate beyond just the exempt group. That could be office professionals. It could be teachers on special assignment. It could be parent educators, principals. It runs the gamut of union representation. So that's why we have the two different classifications. And as of right now, those have dropped down to 186.81 FTEs. And as we're continuing through our tracking, we will bring this slide back to you so that you can see the progress as we progress through. And then here's a slide representing the exempt. Now I did the exempt, just slightly different, and I hate that I did that, but I did it anyway. And so what you see on September 18th is that we had 129.5 FTE roughly, and that is our starting point. As of 11/18/11, November, I believe that we will be down, so that's a projection. I will, I believe we'll be down probably closer to 112, if not lower. And so I just wanted to show a representation of what that will look like when we get there. To talk through a little bit around next steps, phase one was a labor-intensive process. It was really quietly done. We now need to bring our cabinet members into a more robust review of expenditure reductions and potential options. And we've been receiving suggestions from a number of individuals. I've gotten them from board members, from staff, from community members, through our internet, as Dan Vopel had sent out a lot of our communications that people could submit through the budget@tacoma.k12.wa.us, their budget suggestions or reduction suggestions. And so we've been capturing all of those and identifying them. Some are more viable than others. Some are more easily achieved than others. And so now we're trying to weed through and identify, there's lots of potential savings that are existing currently, and we have lots of opportunities still remaining. How do we operationalize those? How can we organize teams to start strategizing ways to implement those different suggestion, suggestions? And then how do we then move forward with communication around those things? So when I talk about the other spending reduction options and the phase two, those are the pieces and the components that we're really focusing on. Again, we'll now look broadly at central services, so we're not quite done with the central services component. But we expect that we will probably get most of the way through our budget shortfall for this year with all of those interactions. I do want to see if Dan wants to add any commentary on some of the communication pieces. We have been very reticent to communicate up till this point, until we had an opportunity to share with you what some of the most significant impacts were, and that there would be maybe some communication components coming.
Thank you, Rosalyn. We're, we've been working on a communication strategy, but it was important to us that you hear about these things first before anybody else. And so that's why this is the first opportunity for this level of detail. And we'll be working on that approach for all of the steps along the way. So one way or another, the superintendent, working with the cabinet, will be working on the reductions, get that information to you first, and then we'll be able to roll it out then to our workforce and then to the, then to the public as we move forward. It's a, it has been difficult and challenging, just both trying to track everything, make sure we're, we're saying things right, and then also just, I would say personally, dealing with the emotional part of it as well, so.
And then just two more statements. We're, we're also now focusing on some of the downstream impacts. Generally, when we ask people to bring reduction suggestions, we also ask them to come with a plan. Not everything is as well thought out as we would expect or hope or want. And so we want to make sure that we're not losing things or forgetting things and that there's not compliance issues that go unnoticed as we work through some of these reductions. And so that is a focus that we are now, you know, aware of, that we're able to communicate this out. So know that we're being cognizant of that. And then lastly, that we intend to come back at the November study session and give you a, a follow-up. And I'm happy to take any questions, and I thank you for your time.
Can I add one thing?
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that, you know, I had lunch with Angel Morton today, and I have reinforced with her, we are proud that we have a competitive salary with our teachers. And so we know that our impacts and our financial impacts are due to a lot of different pieces, you know, that we need to put together. So we just wanted to make sure that we reiterate that we are glad we are offering, we, we could not help but make sure we have competitive salaries, you know, for all of our teachers so that we can keep them here. They're doing an incredible job. And so though we are involving in, you know, you know, that we are, we're required to bounce budget, get back to the budget that you approved, not get back to the same numbers, but, you know, get to a zero threshold, we want to make sure it's clear that we are proud to have competitive salaries.
Director Heinz?
Thank you. I just piggyback on that. I don't see this as the result of, of our long history in Tacoma paying teachers competitively. I see a direct correlation to the legislature's arbitrary decision to go against local voters and you'd laterally reduce the amount of levy that we can connect. That's the problem. That's 100% the problem.
I would like to add to that. Regionalization is also a factor in that, you know, and, and the way that we were impacted disproportionately to some of the other school districts. So between the inequity of levies and the regionalization.
Another arbitrary decision. I appreciate the process. I have three questions. One, when we're getting into the positions that are being eliminated, what is the plan? And I appreciate the sensitivity that we're dealing with human beings and their lives and that this is, it's, it would be easy to get caught up in a $466 million budget, and we're making reductions that are 5% of that total budget, but reminding ourselves that these are people's lives, even the, the folks that transfer. It's a disruption for them. So how are we going to handle typically the HR hirings, rehiring's, determinations comes in the consent agenda? Are we going to have a different process for making, a more transparent process to make those decisions?
There are definitely some requirements that will show up in the consent agenda, such as a true elimination. When an employee is transferred from one job to another, where they will receive like or lower pay, it's not a requirement to put it in the consent agenda. When someone seeks an advancement in title and pay, then that will show up in the consent agenda. But it's, it's a, it's a struggle in the sense that this will be reviewed by public, and these position eliminations are a result of a budget deficit. Nothing more, not performance, not, not anything of that nature. So our thinking at this stage is that it will say position elimination when there is truly no more job and we have an end date. So that will be the category on the consent agenda.
Perhaps then, since the superintendent's report typically precedes the consent agenda, we can have an item to draw that out, so it'll be specified in the, because if we don't talk about it, it gets, it will be identified in the consent agenda. I just want to ensure the transparency in that there's an understanding by the public that there's a due diligence that's being applied, because if we don't call it out, if it's simply a part of the consent agenda, but we don't discuss it, I don't think there'll be as great an awareness of what is happening in order to get to that, to that level of reduction. And when I see under the synopsis of the eight transfers and the five vacancies, I see one program closing. What program is that?
That's the SED partnership, which is our local level benefits as we transition to the SED. So that's one of those positions that I referenced earlier, where the elimination won't actually, we won't feel the financial impact until next year. But there's, the position, the person in the position has been notified.
And as we get into more programmatic impacts, will we have conversations about that ahead of time?
And well, also, I mean, once we get into programs that impact, we also want to get more community input.
Yes, thank you. I'm interested, we're getting closer on the data points on the administrative overhead, and I know it's challenging. You know, we've certainly heard from the community comparisons to other districts. There is, as I've seen it, there, there is no apples-to-apples comparison, because Spokane, which I heard a lot about, characterizes assistant principals as teaching staff, and we have them as part of administration. So trying to parse that out for 295 school districts is going to be incredibly difficult. So I think it's going to be important for us to come up with our own ratios that we can compare to other districts, but really to industry benchmarks, because the district-to-district comparison may not be apples-to-apples, as I mentioned. So.
I'm not even sure there's an industry. There's no industry comparison. I mean, so we're finding as we look, as Rosalyn has said, there's coding that is, you know, it's pretty unique.
Subjective.
And subjective.
So I think to have a number to start with, because I heard 14 to 1, I heard 2 to 1. If you, if we could say what is, if, if we can qualify, it's by our definition, but then there's transparency. So at least we know what we're talking about when we're making decisions in Tacoma to be able to say, these are, these are the number of administrators, and this is what they do, and this is the ratio to teachers in the classroom, or whatever, however we want to contrast it. But it's been so arbitrary and subjective up to this point, I think it's really difficult. And then what is it? What's the reduction? And what are we getting for it? We can eliminate all sorts of positions, but I know that I've had different constituencies in the past five years reach out to say, please advocate for these additional administrative folks at CAB to drive programs that we believe are important to the community, one of which was the library program. A couple of years' worth of listening to the librarians, and that program has become widely successful, because we're now utilizing our professional librarians in a variety of ways. They're not simply checking out books. They are providing important, meaningful educational opportunities for our students. That program is thriving because there's a connection to CAB, and that was one of the things that they pointed out to me, was that when there was not that direct connection, nobody was aware of that program. Nobody cared about the program. Nobody tended to the program. Nobody had a vested interest in what could that program do. And, and so I think to qualify, not just quantify, and the board has certainly been adamant that we want to use a scalpel and not a hatchet on these, on these cuts. It's never fun cutting budgets, but understanding, you know, if we said to the superintendent, just go cut $30 million, you could cut $30 million.
Sure.
We need to understand what the impact is. And I think in a lot of these instances, there isn't fat to be trimmed. I think certainly in some areas there may be, but we're going to come down to cutting out vital organs, like can we live with one kidney, kind of a scenario. And I want us to be very specific on the ramifications. So I like where we're going with this, and as we get ready for November, I think it would be very helpful to see not only the cost savings and the ratio, but what are we getting or what are we losing? And then if we're losing a program where we just have to live with one kidney, is there somebody else out there in the community that we can go to potentially to supplement the work that we're doing or to be creative? If that makes sense. There are things that we're going to have to eliminate potentially that are connected to why our kids are thriving and achieving, and graduation rates are at record rates, and, and perhaps, I think we're pretty good at project management and lean, we've applied those principles. We've heard the cost savings certainly applied to the budget and also just how we run programs. So if we can continue to use those, which is, this is my last remark then, is why I'm, when I see a, a project manager in the PMO, if that's, like, what is the, how do we contextualize the impact? Does that mean we no longer have, do we have 10 of them and now we have nine of them? Or does it mean we no longer have a project management office?
That is one of the positions that was transferred from the project management office to facilities to support and absorb some of the outside external project management work that currently happens with.
At, at a premium cost.
Right. Right. So ultimately, a double cost savings, if you will.
So I raise that as an example of then, just a little bit in there, if these positions would be helpful for us as board members, and then for Mr. Vopel, as we go out to the community, so that people understand, you know, losing an ADA coordinator, are we no longer going to be ADA compliant? Just contextualizing it, I think would be very helpful.
Thank you.
And thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Director Bial, do you have questions or comments?
I have comments. I'm, you know, what I'm most concerned about, and you have, is based upon some experience in the past, is that we make sure that what we're doing at the top doesn't have bad consequences at the bottom. And that's what I see that you're doing. And sometimes you have to be very diligent about that, because sometimes you tweak something and it sets off a whole myriad of stuff that you don't want to, and I can give you some examples from my past experiences at the city and a few other things. And the other question that I have is how are we tracking and making sure that we're maintaining maintenance of effort on our grants?
So we haven't made any categorical reductions
Okay.
in what we're doing. With some, with one exception is that we did reduce administration in special education, but we pay for so much out of the basic education program.
Because that's one of those unintended
Right.
consequences that can occur
Right.
when you get going. And I mean, this is good work, it's really good work, but I want to make sure that we know, you know, where we want to be in our programs and that we have, I call it the end game.
Yeah.
About, for example, in my experience, the governor told us I don't want cuts, we went through the point that I don't, I want social services, I want environment, and I want education. Those are the three linchpins that we're going to make sure that we continue to do those. Those are what, in his administration, that we were about. And we were able to do that. And I guess that's where I'm a little bit nervous right now, is I'm not seeing that piece of what, where are we? And maybe it's there in terms of, you know, we have our strategic plan goals, which probably should be that piece, and figuring out what, what among those in terms of priorities. I know that's extra work, but if we're going to do this, have to do this again, and we don't know whether we're going to have to do this again. You know, what pieces are an integral part of this, of this school district that we are not going to continue to fund? And I know that's going to take some work.
I think that we've been tracking that internally, as we're going through these reductions and keeping track of everything.
But what are they that you're tracking? I guess that's the question that I have in terms of, what are our priorities as we go through this?
So we're tracking job roles connected with outcomes. So we know that if we eliminate this, then that function is going to lead to a role, you know, that role is going to lead to a function that we need. I hear what you're saying, and you said that from the beginning, and I know how important that is. I am not going to, you know, I'm not going to say that, you're exactly right, we know, and I think the slide acknowledged, that we're going to have some unintended consequences.
I know it is. I'm just saying we need to be very aware of that, that when you tweak one part of
We, no, we understand that.
Something else gets, but I guess I still, I'm wondering what our bottom line is about in terms of what are our critical programs in this school district that we need to continue so that we can continue to do that? And that has to be the umbrella for us at some point. I mean, this is good work now, but if we have to get into, if the legislature said, you know, we're not going to fix your levy, we're not going to do this, we're going to have to do that at some point. And I guess that's where I want to make sure that that paradigm's in place, so that we know that these are the critical things that we do and have to do as a school district to continue to serve our kids. And, you know, one, your comment, Director Heinz, about, you know, trying to find a standard, when Wally Miller and I wrote the school funding for me in 1983, we gave up. I mean, we had to put it together, and it's still the one the prototypical model got based on, as Rosalyn knows, and there are just, there are just too many, again, it's that economy's a scale, you've got little dinky school districts and you've got great big school districts, and at some point, the state needs to, we told them they needed to do this, is tier their school districts by size and develop, and nobody's ever wanted to get in there and do that, to come up with, you know, here's the standard for school districts with 25,000 and over, and here's the standard, and so on. So I know what Carla's saying, there is no best practices for that, and that goes back a long, long time. But I guess where I, you know, where I am, I'm very pleased to see what you've done. You've done really, really good work.
Thank you.
But I'm just going to be your conscience about where I think we need to.
I mean, to your point, I think round two really fits well with the conversation around decision packages and budget by priorities.
And that's where I'm at, but, and we need to decide what those priorities are, or really know what they are, if we're going to, if we have to, after next session, go into some, you know, deeper stuff that we've gone through.
It's still some, as I know you know, because you've told me.
I'm not being critical, I'm really not.
No, I know you're not. And it's, what we're already realizing is, we sit around the table and we work through it, it's so, it is subjective.
It is very subjective.
Because what you have is you have 10 programs in a row that are all serving the same strategic goal, and we can't keep all of them. And so then the priority becomes, you know, how many students are impacted?
And that's what I'm saying.
And how much does it cost per student, and all of those things.
And come back to us and tell us what you think those priorities are at some point when you get into that, about, you know, this is something that we're not going to, we're not, you know, this program is more important than this one.
And we don't always agree, even at our table, because
Well, we probably won't agree here either, but we'll have to.
It does, you know, it's a difficult process, as I know you know.
I do know, I know, and I know laying people off is, I'm sitting here thinking about all the people that I know in those jobs, and I know that that is, it's hard, but you know, when you're, it's the nature of the economy, it's the nature of what happens in private sector and public sector, and, I mean, if, when, you know, when the Boeing mess was, when the last person turned the lights off Boeing, in a matter of four months, went from 105,000 employees to 33,000. So you can imagine what an impact on people's lives and what that was all about. And also was a heck of an impact on state government. It almost took us under with them. So I, you know, I'm pleased with what I see, and I know that you're on top of this, but at some point, I just feel that that top piece of what the priorities and what the, where our goals are, and we're in a good position to do that with our strategic plan and our benchmarking and knowing Carla, what works and what we get the most bang for the buck out of. So that's just comments that I want to make, and, you know, I think we're headed, we're obviously headed in the right direction. This is awesome work already for this task, but, God, we aren't going to find the best practices. I know that.
And so my point was, we need to create
Well, we can create our own.
We need to create a ratio and a rationale for that. And what I hear Director Bial saying, and what I agree with, is I think that you'll need direction from the board when we're in alignment with the strategic plan, for us to say academic achievement, right? Bring us cuts to partnerships, bring us cuts to early learning, that we will need to provide you with what are those things that we're, that as a board, we're going to protect.
That is my note.
And then as a board, we have to find some time to get together to say
That's what we have, those committee of the whole district.
Exactly, so I think that's why having that in our practices, to be able to have those tough conversations publicly, so that we make a business case for why are we saying academic achievement, or within academic achievement, our kids that are most vulnerable, or whatever criteria, so that there's a rationale as to, you know, partnerships to me is, has been an amazing, an amazing, over 200 partnerships and the work that's occurred there. If I had to choose between academic achievement and partnerships, I would say let's start with partnerships. But that's an example.
They're not mutually exclusive, because we have partnerships that are serving academic achievement, sorry.
And that's what we need to see, is those inner relationships of what is critical, what isn't. I mean, like early learning, we've seen our kids ready for kindergarten, and, you know, maybe that's, we start looking out for graduation rates 10 or 12 years out. These kids are, you know, walk kids are ready, they're, you know, and so, you know, we've got a lot of work to do, and all of us, and I feel very confident we'll get there and we'll do the right thing, and we'll come out of this probably stronger than we were before we went into it, because we have a committed board and a superintendent, and we care about kids and are up there every single day, and we've learned how to work together, and we've gone through some tough stuff, and, you know, this just tests our character, you know, and we've got strong character in this school district.
And that elicited the exact response I'm looking for, right? Well, no, we can't do that, because rather than we just start arbitrarily cutting stuff, you had, and that's what I appreciate, you had in your mind why, no, you can't just do that, yes. So that's, so when we have those conversations, we can say, what can we live without, what can't we live without, because of those, like I said earlier, those interdependencies, it's complex, it's nuanced, and
We just have to figure out what gives us the most, as I said, you know, what's the most efficient and most effective, and we can do that, and when we get down to that, and we'll have to do some.
Yeah, I immediately, like, did this to that comment too, so I look forward to those conversations too, because I wholeheartedly believe in the interconnectedness of our partnerships and that work to our academic achievement. So just to this conversation, I get a little bit nervous talking about program and that frame, because programs are run by lots of people. So within the work that you all are doing to get at the priorities and like considerations like numbers of students served, cost per student, I'm interested in also understanding like critical levels of service within those programs, so that if we can reduce the availability of the program from five days to four, or from five to three, what cost savings can we get while still maintaining like the program? So I really appreciate that conversation and thinking of it that way. And that gets to the, one of the questions I have about something you said earlier, Rosalyn, you talked about when an example might be deferred maintenance. I'm curious about the kinds of deferred maintenance. Is this deferred systems maintenance, or is this like grounds maintenance? And if it is something that the public is going to see, us being clear about that, because I know folks in the community get concerned about the level of maintenance across our schools, grass cutting, all those things. So if it's going to be some things that folks will see, making sure that's part of the communication too. And you don't have to answer the question about the systems and things, but
I can.
Oh, okay.
So we had intended to do an additional $500,000 of preventative maintenance that would have been grounds and building maintenance, and so we're just not going to be able to invest those resources. They weren't resources that we had been investing, but we had an opportunity to build in ongoing expenditures with increased revenues, we're just not going to be able to do that now.
Okay. And then the one very detailed question I had, because I just talked to some of our student teachers tonight, was about, just a warm handoff, if that's been, I know that you all are planning all of this already, between, with the elimination of the, or the, yeah, elimination of the student teacher and university liaison, just wondering if we'll continue to have someone pick up that function, just because I know so many of our future teachers come from our student teachers, and maintaining those relationships seems
Sorry, you know, we're working, and as we talk, work through, we're working on figuring out, so who can pick up that service and look at it? But the bottom line is, some of these services we have put in, you know, because we knew they were important, and they cost money, and we're not going to be able, what I'm worried about is I don't want the public to think we're going to cut this money and everything's going to be the same.
Be able to do everything.
It's not. We can't do it. And we're going to lose things that are important to people, that they didn't want to see go, and that they're going to really be upset about it. And I agree with your conversation, we're looking at priority and what it is, but I can tell you that our, all around just this table, our priorities are going to be different about what we have. And what's, what Tacoma has done in the last, you know, what, five to seven years, is really provide access to students and really provide opportunities to students, and those things cost resources. And so it is difficult, and what I don't want people, you know, what tends to happen, I've been through budget cutting before, is people say, yeah, go ahead, cut that central office, get it down to shape, and then they're furious when they find out we don't have teacher mentors. And people to go out to schools and mentor new teachers. And you can't have both.
Affecting the bottom, and people need to understand that. When you cut up here, it's going to affect what goes on down to the bottom.
Thank you. Sorry.
Any other comments? We have lots more to talk about, but any other comments for tonight?
Good meeting, good meeting, thank you.
Thank you.
Renee, thanks again for your help for me, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Well, if there are no further comments, given that we are at item number four, I will say that we are adjourned.
Can you give me a ride home?
I can.
You can?
Yep, I can.
Okay.
Can everyone hear me? I can.
Fighting, I am fighting so popular. Martin's on my bad list.